Go out there and even today. This group's experience. Yeah, absolutely. Go out there and protest to your heart's delight if you want to keep it civil and not causing a problem.
Why don't you threaten people, breaking things?
Jeff Contermann.
Yeah, it happens. One group wants to be a little more involved. Not necessarily disruptive, just in anticipation of bigger groups. So we may have to make two or more.
The Love's Park. Farming field. Down river. You rode there. All of a sudden we come up there by the McDonald's just before Perryville. Most eight keys are going. Then later on the news I seen that they're all laying down on the ground. Okay.
I call the June 8th, 2020 City Council Committee of the whole meeting to order. The clerk will call a roll.
Arivolo. Arivolo. Absent. Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Present.
Freeman. Freeman. Absent. McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Aidan participation.
Okay, thank you. Under public comment, Attorney Drella will read an informational update from the County Board presented by Jeff Carlisle concerning construction proposals for 76 in Boone County.
As indicated, Mr. Carl has submitted for public comment a request for some information to be written to the record. IDOT is proposing new right-of-way infrastructure improvements involving roundabouts at various intersections within the county, including the intersections of Route 76 and Pre-Creek Road, as well as 76 and Caledonia Road, I believe he provided, and some other locations. This information was to be provided to you to allow you to know that these matters will be brought to County Board on their upcoming agendas and to hopefully involve the participation in those discussions from everybody within the city as well as the County Board.
Thank you. Under public forum, we have none this evening. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, under Item 1, Building, Planning, and Zoning Unfinished Business, there is none. Under Number 2, Building, Planning, and Zoning New Business, there is none. Under Public Works Unfinished Business, also none. However, under Public Works New Business, we have a list. Up first is the Southwest Elevated Tank Rehabilitation for the Water Department. Director Anderson will fill you in.
Thank you, Your Honor. A memo in your packets. Strand Associates has completed the inspection of all our water storage facilities, and we determined that the Southwest Elevated Tank is the highest priority for rehabilitation. The project will include full abrasive blast and recoating of the tank exterior, recoating of the wet portion of the interior of the tank, replacement of the expansion joint and the riser pipe with necessary structural improvements. Attached to the memo is a proposal from Strand Associates in an amount not to exceed $39,000 to complete the design bidding, construction services, and warranty inspection for this project. The capital fund budget includes $440,000 to complete this work. The expansion joint and structural improvements will be done this summer. The specifications on the painting and the sandblasting would be put together. The bid process will be done when that's, after that's finished. So the bid process will be this fall, and painting would be set for next year at the earliest convenience as far as the weather permitting, which is usually about the middle of May to the 1st of June is when tank painting season starts. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Strand Associates in an amount not to exceed $39,000 for the design and inspection of the Southwest Elevated Tank Rehabilitation Project. This work will be paid for from Water Department Capital Funds.
May I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Stevens?
Just for clarification, which tank is this?
The Southwest Tank is the one out on Newburg Road.
Okay, Alderman Frank, did you have a question?
Say one.
Okay. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Is anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. It's approved. Item B is the Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan. Again, a Water Department item.
Again, memo in your packet. Congress passed America's Water Infrastructure Act of 2018, which requires all community water systems serving more than 3,300 people to prepare a risk and resilience assessment and develop an emergency response plan. Our current Water Department capital budget includes $52,500 to complete this work. Attached to the memo is a proposal from Strand Associates in the amount of $31,500 to complete this work. The assessment and response plan had to be completed and submitted to U.S. EPA by June 30th of 2021. The difference in the cost between what was budgeted and what's being proposed is since the initial notices came out from, from the EPA, they have altered some of their required information to be provided in that risk assessment, which makes it a little bit more economically feasible for the communities. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Strand Associates in the amount of $31,500 to complete the risk and resilience assessment and develop the emergency response plan for our community water system to be submitted to U.S. EPA for approval. And again, this work will be paid for out of our capital funds.
May I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Is anyone opposed? Motion is approved unanimously. Next up, we have General Mills has made a request to lower the speed limit by the plant. There was a letter in your packet explaining their rationale for doing so. I think it's an appropriate action to take. I would entertain a motion to meet their request.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? The request to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour is approved unanimously. Next up, under mosquito control, we have money in the budget for mosquito control as we did citywide last year. As promised, this is an item in excess of $25,000, so we're bringing it back for your approval. They have a motion to approve the mosquito control for the city of Belvedere.
I'll make that motion.
No, make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, and who is the second?
Snow.
Snow. Snow is the second. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes?
The Clark mosquito, Clark Spring, who, the company that did the workforce last year, has indicated that the price is the same as last year, which is $8,125 per application.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
We have, you're opposed? Did you have a question? Did I have an appropriate motion, a second for that? Okay. It's approved with one nay vote, which would be Alderman Frank. Okay, thank you. Next, under DCO 2020 Notice of Funding Opportunities. Becky, did you want to present those?
Sure. In your, in your package, you have a letter from me just recognizing the two different DCO grant opportunities. One is for $100,000 from Representative Keiker, and the other one is $300,000 from Representative Siznowski. After discussions with Public Works Director and the mayor, we felt that this money would be used, would be best spent on the stormwater projects that are currently underway that you approved in last year's budget. This would help offset that $1.1 million, so we could use $400,000 either for another project or put it back in the general fund in case we need it.
So in essence, these are grants that are, have been made to us. We just have to fill out the acceptance paperwork. They have a motion to approve.
You need a, we need a separate motion for each one.
We'll need a separate motion for each one. We'll take, Becky, what's the first one you want to?
It'd be grant opportunity OGM-20-H-72 in the amount of $300,000.
They have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Frank. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Porter.
Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, yes. Yes, Alderman Stevens.
Waiting for these grants, is this gonna hold up this at any way, getting this stuff done this year?
No, we've already budgeted for it, so I've already moved this money into capital fund since some of the work has already began, so we just, it shouldn't hold up anything, right Brent?
It shouldn't hold up anything. The grants are for basically current fiscal year, so we're getting closer finally to be able to do the Dongate Pond and the Bellwood Pond, because we're making progress finally after the state unfroze our grant for the Brownfield property, which the material from the two Bellwood and Dongate Ponds, that material will be taken and used on the Brownfield grant. So we are getting all our paperwork back up and running for what we need to finish the Brownfield grant, so all that work hopefully will be completed this summer yet.
Okay, so we're planning on getting them both going this summer, then?
I'm planning on getting them all done this summer, and we're, we just had the last of the sampling that was required to update our disposal permit for this. We still have six inches of material that we have to remove and dispose of off of the Brownfield site, and we need to go take that through the landfill, so that permit process is hopefully finishing up now. We dropped off our last sample results to them, so hopefully we'll get the thumbs up there, which will, we can start the process then.
Okay, because I talked to Sheila Fowler today, and she's quite concerned about this with the big rain we got. They were that close to having problems. She said she sent in a, an email to be read tonight. Did we get it? Did not get it?
No, it did not.
Did not. Because she would like to be able to come in and discuss this with us and show us pictures. When would she be able to come in with stuff so that she can?
If she, convenience, she can come in?
I was gonna say, if she gives me a call and makes arrangements, then I can go over the pictures, talk to her. Our next meeting, the next committee meeting, we're gonna have a presentation on the Stormwater Utility, so that would be an opportune time probably to?
Would that be the 22nd?
Yes, that'll be the immediate 22nd.
Oh, good. She'd like to come in the 22nd and get on the agenda so she can bring her stuff.
Well, Alderman Stevens, you'll recall that a few weeks ago, maybe a month or two ago now, the council adopted new rules for public comment for the duration of COVID executive orders, where people are not to come in person for, for public comment. They can submit, as you, in case she thought she had, a letter in writing, and if she does that ahead of time, we can include her pictures in the packet. If she gets it to us by Wednesday, by noon on Wednesday before the meeting, that way you can include her pictures as well as her written comment in the packet.
Okay, now, when are we supposed to be all back in session here? I heard, what was the date that they were?
It'll be considered on the 26th.
Of June.
Of June, whether or not they will continue.
Okay.
The executive order.
Okay. Like I said, if she, if she gets ahold of me, then she can, I can meet with her by appointment, and then we can go over it, and she can share that stuff, and I can put it together and make sure it gets to the packet.
Okay, I will let her know.
So the night, two Sundays ago, of the rain that we're talking about, I had received a phone call from someone who said that there was starting to be some flooding, and I got in my truck after it quit raining, and I went up to Bellwood, went all through the whole neighborhood there. It was about two hours after the rain had quit, and the rain had basically dissipated. It was laying in, in some fields a little bit. I also went, and the next day, Brett and I went and looked at the alley behind Caswell Street, because that perpetually floods, and we've added that to our work list for the summer to fix that alley the best we can in terms of the pitch, because what the problem is, is the alley is higher than the yards on either side, and that's the natural overland route for when we do have heavy rain and flowage, so we're gonna try to amend that to the best of our ability to redirect the flow to the storm sewers, so.
Yeah, because I was there within minutes after the rain stopped, and there was a lot of water back.
You know, and that's the thing, that's the interesting thing about that, is if the rain quits, it travels away pretty quick, but if it continues raining for three or four hours, and we're getting a couple inches an hour, there's no place to absorb it, so.
Because on my street, I mean, I'd never seen it flood that bad, but in less than an hour, it was gone.
Gone, yeah. So let's hope we don't have rain for more than like an hour going forward, and try to deal with that.
And again, Alderman Stevens, I would encourage her to have those pictures in, in order to make the packet, because as you know, we have about one-third of the council actually coming to meetings and two-thirds participating from home. If she were to show up with pictures, they wouldn't see them here. Whereas if she gets them in the packet, we can send them to home, so I'll have them in the packets.
When we were gonna be all in here, then it'd be better for, but I will talk to her, and she can hopefully get it all here.
So, Madam?
I have pictures too, but I think they won't be able to see them over the phone, so, you know, on TV, so I'm gonna wait and bring them.
Madam Secretary, we do have a motion in a second, correct? Do we have any other additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of the?
Alderman Snow, I gotta tell you, I couldn't hear hardly anything, you guys. I could hear people talking. I could tell who was talking, and, but as far as getting any gist out of what we just talked about, about anybody flooding, I heard something about Caswell, but to be quite frank, I don't know if everybody's just not speaking up, using the microphones, or I know we're gonna be talking about communication stuff and equipment, but I couldn't hear boo about what was going on.
So the gist of it, Dan, is we were well aware that there was some flooding initially when we had the rainstorm two Sundays ago. It fortunately dissipated rather quickly. I was talking about, I took a tour. I took a tour after the rain had stopped in the troubled neighborhoods, and indeed, by two hours afterwards, the rain had gone away, but we don't always know that the rain's gonna stop, so we've added the Caswell Alley behind Caswell to our reconstruction plan for this summer. We completed one alley, refurbished an alley that had been made last year. We'll do that one this year. And we talked about in detail how we're gonna use the earth from digging the ponds on Bellwood to finish the Brownfields tomorrow, the earth to finish the Brownfield project from the leaf, so. So it's all what?
Okay.
The US project. So may I have all of the favor of accepting the first grant, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, that sounds unanimous to me. We have the second grant, which will be used to get the store or management projects. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
By Alderman Stevens, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, sounds unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, we have landfill number two. There is a renewal of the contract with TRC. Brent, do you want to present that?
It's actually a work order amendment for TRC. We're looking to basically be able to turn off our flare system out there, gas collection and flare system, and go with a natural attenuation or natural vent to atmosphere. The quality and quantity of our gas out there has been diminishing over time as the landfill gets older and older, and it's to the point where it's very difficult to keep that flare in operation. It's a, it's a constant battle to keep it in tune and be able to keep it running. So we've got a proposal from TRC in the amount of $9,800 to, to do the necessary testing and put the request together to be submitted to EPA for their review and hopeful approval of allowing us to basically shut the flare system off at landfill number two, and we'll be able to vent to atmosphere. So I would recommend approval of the proposal from TRC in the amount of $9,800 for the blower flare system at landfill number two.
May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second?
Alderman Porter.
We have a second from Alderman Porter.
And this, I'll add, this work will be split 50/50 with the, with the county. Typically, this would have gone through a coordinating committee, but since they're no longer in, in operation, we're doing them individually.
Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Next up, Alderman Burton had asked to discuss flooding. Alderman Burton, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, just regarding flooding, I had three specific areas in particular I wanted to discuss. It sounds like you guys already addressed two of them. The first one being the Bellwood area and the retention pond. I don't know if you guys have anything else to add to that, or if we pretty much covered it?
Other than, yeah, moving ahead with the schedule, so hopefully we'll be out to bid for that work shortly. It all hinges on how, what the status is, on the Brownfield grant, getting that paperwork done, getting that six inches removed, and then we have to put a liner in at the Brownfield property before we put the borrow material from the two pond properties. We have a minority contract provision in the grant for the Brownfields, and it's the anticipation that we are going to utilize the, the liner portion of that project to, to meet our minority requirements. So that information hopefully will be coming to committee. Hopefully in two weeks, I'll have that information ready for you guys to review.
And what was your other area you wanted to talk about? Go ahead.
Yep, and then the second one, the second one's the alley I think that you already addressed. Unless you have anything to add on to that, I can go to the third one.
Okay.
Well, again, as far as the alley goes, we're gonna do what we can do there. We can't do a lot, but we can, we can make a little bit of improvement, a little bit of grading work there, but just, they gotta understand that the overland flow route for when we get the big heavy rains and the, and the pipe system can't handle it, and it flows overland. The overland flow route for that area goes right through that, that section, so we can't make the, the flooding go away, but hopefully we can do the best job we can to manage it.
Okay, and the third area is on 10th Street between New River and Fifth Avenue. Flooding's pretty bad there. I don't know if you have anything for us on that, Brent?
I'll have to get you, get some more specifics from you as far as where it was or who was affected, and I can take a look into it further. I haven't heard of anything in that area specifically, so whatever you got there, give me a call tomorrow, and we'll go through it.
Okay, well, actually, like Alderman Stevens, I had a couple people that might wanna come in with some pictures and some videos. We're hoping to do that next month or whenever we can get that on the agenda.
Okay, again, if you'd like to have that stuff, I'd be happy to meet with the people before the committee meetings to go over it. Pictures and videos are always good to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burton. Under number five, other, under Communications, Alderman Burton also wanted to visit about our communications systems. Alderman Burton, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I don't know if Alderman Porter had something real quick there. I thought I heard him.
Alderman Porter, did you have comments?
I had a quick question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, a question for Brent. I was just wondering, Brent, I was wondering where we were at with the Sixth Street flooding issue. Last I heard, we were still doing the environmental study for the wetland area.
That's correct. Quick update on that. The Corps of Engineers have made the decision that they have jurisdiction over that drainage way, so we have to go through their process, permitting process, to be able to do work in that drainage way. We just submitted the permit application this past Friday to the Corps of Engineers, which will allow us to do, it limits us to only 1,000 feet of improvement, so that's what we're proposing to do at this point in time, and that'll be 1,000 feet starting at Sixth Street going, going north towards the river. In order to do a bigger, the original intent was to go all the way through Appleton to Appleton. In order to do that, it's a much longer, much process, more expensive, so we'll probably still look at doing that, but initially, we thought we'd better get this 1,000 feet sooner than later, so we've made that application. Hopefully, Corps of Engineers will get back to us 30 to 45 days. It may take them up to 60 days to respond, and then once we get that permit okayed, we will be able to go out to bid, and basically it'd be an armored low-flow channel that would be installed for that 1,000 feet.
Does that cover your, your question?
Okay, thanks, Brent.
Alderman Porter?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Burton, you wanted to talk about communications. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Just originally, I had put the communications on the agenda just because I wanted to discuss the possibility of streaming live on YouTube, but since that time, I had a conversation with Attorney Drella. Seems like that's in the works, and I would be comfortable if we just wanted to go on the end to Attorney Drella and go into letter B.
Okay. Attorney Drella, you have the floor.
And surprise being surprised, Alderman Burton, if you have access to a computer, do me a favor and check YouTube real quick. I hopefully did it correctly, and if I did, this is the inaugural YouTube Live Audio Only of a City Council meeting, and the only reason it's audio only, I literally did an old-school hack and taped all my business cards over the camera of the laptop, is because we really don't have a camera hooked up to the internet adequately where we could get the room as a whole. It'd just be a camera off of the laptop, so hopefully that is working, and I'll be able to go back and check later on to see if it did work. But if any of you have it on by chance, let me know later on tonight. Send me an email or something. Dovetailing into Item B on the agenda is a rather lengthy memo that I included, and by way of a brief history, the last time we negotiated a franchise agreement with Comcast, we negotiated under federal statute the utilization of a public educational governmental broadcast channel, PEG fee, or PEG channel. Sometimes I think of Wayne's Worldwide, I think of that kind of a channel. At any rate, the, the? At any rate, the intent was, and the federal statute allows municipality to require that as part of a franchise agreement. The cable provider provides one channel that the government can use, and the city at that time thought it'd be good to stream city council meetings, commit the whole means. Boone County Board meetings were included at one time. Some school district board meetings were included. And to do that, Comcast gave us the channel, but then we also needed video recorders, switches, cameras, and all the other hardware that goes along with streaming this over Channel 20. Comcast at that time basically loaned us the money at no interest to purchase all that equipment, and they repaid through something called a PEG fee, which is also authorized by federal statute. And they repaid through that PEG fee for all the infrastructure that they put in. Thereafter, the fee continued for a period of, I think it was 18 or 24 months. It was a very small surcharge on each customer's bill to fund, essentially sinking fund, to replace equipment as it wore out. And as my memo indicates, there's currently $26,666.16 in that account within our general fund that is dedicated solely to replacing equipment as it breaks down or gets old. As you know, we've been utilizing that system for quite some time. We have not had to upgrade it at all. It's been up to repair a couple times. And two recent things have led to the desire to upgrade and replace our existing equipment. And before I go on, by the way, just so you know, that fee's no longer on the bills. That was discontinued after that amount was raised. First off, as you know, we switched over to the county as our IT provider. And one of the initial things I noticed right away was I was having difficulty managing the slides and the video that's placed upon Channel 20. And that is because it requires the use of Flash Player, and they had blocked Flash Player because of known security vulnerabilities to it. They've allowed me to use it. I've been able to maintain Channel 20 since then, but because of the security vulnerabilities built into the Flash Player, they have asked us at our earliest convenience to upgrade the system away from that. In discussions with the provider that we use, Electronics, that's one of the reasons they've discontinued the model we're using. And they don't even supply it, support it, and nor can we get spare parts for it anymore. So effectively, if our current system ceases working, we'd have to buy a new system anyway. So of course, we started going out and giving proposals to do that. At the same time I was doing that, we started having more and more problems with our audio system here in the council chambers, specifically a lot of crackling and crunching coming over the speakers that was also going out over the internet on the YouTube channel. It's being caused by our PA system here in City Hall. I had the original firm that built the system for us install it in 2006. Audio engineering come out, and likewise, it's out of support. They can't get parts for it anymore, and they suggested we replace it. So I included that all within the seeking proposals. I contacted Comcast to give me an idea of who does this kind of work anymore. It's not like you go over to Best Buy and buy a video server like this to run things. And they gave me a list of providers. There was about six vendors long, and calling them, some of them were no longer business at all. One of them had bought by one of the competitors that are bidding on this, and one of them, Audio Engineering, only does the audio side. They don't do the video side. So the only two real quotes I have for video are from Keycode and AVI, who's our current provider. And looking at all of the quotes as I provided, Keycode is substantially less expensive than AVI. And most of that difference in price comes down to the installation costs, as the actual media server being quoted are identically the same. Also, AVI included hardware, which is not essential to providing the services that we currently provide to Channel 20. It may be luxury items. I compared it, this morning I compared it to, with Alderman Flurry, to a car that you're buying with all the bells and whistles and the highest trim line versus the car with the lower trim line. Keycode being the lower trim line and AVI being the higher trim line. So the recommendation would be to purchase the Electronics unit and other items as set forth in Keycode's quote as set forth in the memo from Keycode Media. And that is, so the motion is motion approve the proposal from Keycode Media for the purchase and installation of a new media server, new camera, new microphones for remote use, and new audio system as set forth in proposal quote number 209196V1. What this will actually do for us, it'll give us a new media server that will allow us to actually go live with video over YouTube as well as opposed to just audio. It will take us into the next century with all digital, well, it's all digital now, but HD, at least storage, even if we can't get HD out over Comcast Channel 20, you'll have higher definition over YouTube at least. And it gets us into a modern unit that should last five to 10 years where this one's end of life, and if it bites the dust, we're out of service for, until we can get a new proposal, a new one installed on an emergency basis. The camera, the additional, we'll keep using the existing camera that we have now. It's a fine camera. The additional camera will allow us to take it out into the public if we want to record parades, if we want to record other segments in the community, we can do that. And it also will serve as a backup camera to the one we have now, so that if this one does, again, this is bought in 2006, if this one does have a glitch, we can simply swap it out. So that makes sense to do that. The new microphones are not the microphones that are at your tables. We'd be reusing those, hopefully for the short term at least, to see how they work. All landies that came out here, looked at them, said they're fine. The new microphones are portable microphones that we can use when we're doing segments like we've been doing on YouTube with leaders from the community coming in and talking with us, or if we want to do segments out in the community. So those are those new microphones. What this new equipment will not do, and most importantly for those of you that stay at home, Alderman Snow earlier mentioned that he was having trouble hearing us, it's not going to fix that problem. Because obviously, we're working with a speakerphone in the middle of the room, and that has nothing to do with the equipment we're buying. I will point out that one of AVI's solutions in their PA system would include, and this is at extreme, at a higher cost, it includes a lot more labor and higher equipment, being able to wire our phone system through the PA system, so that would be better quality at home. In my opinion, it's probably not worth it at this point for the higher cost, because quite frankly, this is extreme circumstances. You guys should all be back in the room hopefully by July anyway. And frankly, we can probably solve a lot of that problem by remembering to use our microphones and speaking up. It will not solve the problem where we forget to use our microphones on people listening at home on TV or YouTube. You got to remember to use the microphones. I'm guilty of that as well. And if you don't speak into the microphone, you don't use the microphone, no system you buy is going to fix that problem. That's quite frankly, user error on our part. So the recommendation there is to approve the proposal from Keycode Media for the purchase and installation of a new media server, new camera, and new microphones for remote use and the new audio system as set forth in proposal quote number 20916, I'm sorry, 196V1.
May I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please? I'll second. I have a second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
You just lost the whole conference. Whoever's in the conference, hold it on. We can't hear anything else.
Way to put them to sleep, Mike.
They all split, man. They said, oh, man.
They hung up.
Guess we need a new speakerphone, too.
I thought that was a new speakerphone.
It is.
This service is provided by FreeConferenceCall.com. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. If this is correct, press 1. To re-enter your access, there are six participants in the conference.
Hi, guys.
Please announce yourself.
Anybody on the phone I can hear just fine, but once they're talking in council chambers, it's just echoey.
We're back. We're back. This is why we need new systems.
All right. Yee-haw.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for approval of the least expensive alternative to replacing our audiovisual equipment. All those in favor, does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Can you guys hear us?
Yes, I don't have any.
Hearing no questions and comments, all those in favor of approval of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Is anyone opposed? Sounds unanimous to me. Thank you very much. Sorry about the glitch. This'll fix that. So next up, under C, under other, we have the harassment policy. Alderman Drellah will explain that this is a necessary thing for the city and all of you and all of us to do.
And once again, I've been demoted to the status of Alderman. Actually, I think that's a promotion with a cut in pay. Can anyone hear me okay this time?
I can hear you asking if we can hear you okay, but before that, no, I couldn't hear very well.
Well, that's because I was just being snide and obnoxious.
Yeah, we have a censor for that now these days.
So the proposed-
You need to pull the string tighter on the can, Mike.
Okay.
So the proposed changes to the harassment policy are actually dictated by changes in state law. Most important, for purposes of all the elected officials here and listening in, is that you are now drawn within the gambit or the coverage of a harassment policy that's dictated by the state, and specifically allows for filing of harassment charges, sexual harassment charges, by one elected official against another. Why they found that necessary, I'm not sure, but we had to amend our policy as set forth in the proposal to you to cover that. The second part was a requirement that all employees of a municipality, as well as their independent contractors, undergo sexual harassment training annually. That is something, and checking with each of our departments, that we've been doing anyway, but it has to become a part of the city's personnel sexual harassment policy. So the recommendations to motion to approve and forward to City Council in resolution or ordinance form, it'll probably be a resolution, the attached harassment policy.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please? Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the resolution?
Snow has a question. So did I hear you right, Mike Drellah, that our contractors also have to participate in yearly training? And how do you supervise that, or you just make them sign a letter that yes, they comply?
Well, the, well, that's actually an interesting question. Well, the law does not require the contractors to do the annual training. They're simply drawn into being a covered entity with respect to sexual harassment with respect to the city. I take it back. They would have to do the training as well. We'd simply have to require them to give us a certification, just like we do now with federal grant monies. They require certified us that they have a sexual harassment policy in place and undergo training.
Additional questions or comments?
So it's just a paper shuffle that they say, yes, we do this, and everybody moves on?
They have to furnish the certificate, don't they?
That is not covered in the statute, but they do in the federal grant context, yes.
Okay. Alderman Stevens?
Does that mean that the Aldermen are going to get scheduled to do the training also? Because we should if we're going to say we do it.
Well, I don't know if we can offer the option of doing it online like the Open Meetings Act training we all have today. Respect we can.
The statute did not, for purpose of training, include all the persons as a covered entity. Required, created provision by which, if there's a claim, it has to be processed by this policy. It does not require an older person to take the training. That being said, of course, I'd encourage you to, and it's actually a free-based online train that you can get through either the Illinois Municipal League or through the Illinois Department of Labor.
Okay, because I know, because I know the, our insurance company or someone, Municipal League actually offers the training, because, you know, when I was still in the department, they did bloodborne pathogens, sexual harassment, and they came out and they did it.
Yep. That was Blaine from IML RMA.
I'm glad we're having him come.
Yeah. They also offer the training. They'll do it live, of course, in person. I want to say, I think Brent, you use that training for your department, don't you? He's nodding his head yes, for those that cannot see.
Yes.
I believe the fire department uses somebody else for their training.
Yes.
But the reality is, as long as it all complies with the state mandate, we're good. So you could either do it through IML RMA live here at City Hall at Public Works, or you can do it online through the IML or through the Department of Labor.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the resolution now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank?
Is it an annual thing that we have to do every year?
Employees will have to do it annually.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the resolution now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Sounds unanimous to me. Okay. The final item on the agenda this evening, under D, is donation to the Bellator Fire Department from the Walmart Corporation. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellator Fire Department is seeking approval to accept a $500 donation from Walmart to be utilized in the department's fire prevention efforts.
May I have a motion to that effect, please? I'll make the motion.
No, make that motion.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Thank you. Another unanimous decision, which brings us to the end of, yes?
Just one quick thing regarding the audit. Our auditor, Sickitt, should have sent all of you an email, probably to your city email regarding those fraud interviews that we do every year and the form that goes with it. So I encourage you to check that email. If you need it sent again, let me know. If you need it sent somewhere else, let me know. If you want a paper copy, let me know that as well. With COVID, they were trying to avoid sending things in the mail, but they will if they need to.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second? May I have a second? I'll second. Second by Alderman Flurry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are now adjourned. Thank you so much.